Last time I was there.
All right, you're all set.
Thank you. Good, thank you. All right, so I'll start off here with the public taxation in 2023 at 4:35 PM. By Zoom, we have one. I'm in the audience. All right.
I have two, actually.
I'm sorry?
There are two Zoom attendees.
Okay.
Commissioner.
We've seen one, but.
Uh, she doesn't have her video going.
Okay, those are, we know.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. To taxation meeting required to qualify for state admission revenue, the purpose of public areas receive public comment on both military rates to be living 2023 authorized by statute and by county. Board authority as follows allocated operating 6.1500 fire ambulance point oh four seven five oh four two seven five roads point nine eight two one recycling point five zero 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 senior program point seven four five six and animal shelters point zero nine nine four. Is there any public comment on any of these tax allocations? Those military rates for 2024. I'll come in going once, going twice. Closed at 4:36.
It went through Zoom.
Oh, Zoom.
No, I'm not seeing any hand gestures or anything like that, so.
All right then, I will declare that closed. And do we need to get out of this meeting, or do we just go into? Okay, now we'll try to pledge our peaches for the regular county. 2023, Mr. Shapleton, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and.
Again, please.
Mr. Lawrence.
Here.
Mr. Savoy.
Here.
Mr. Shackleton.
Here.
Mr. Trainer.
Here.
And Sherman Martin.
Here. This is deletions to the agenda. Shall we have it as presented?
So move.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Agenda is adapted as approved as presented. County Board minutes from May 11, 2023.
Move approval.
Support. Move along support. For me, correspondence received on page nine.
Mr. Chair, I move that the correspondence be acknowledged and forwarded as appropriate.
Support and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes. Public comment. Rules here, 15 minutes for anyone subject, three minutes for anyone person. Come up and where there's a red microphone would be great. Do we have any take it some public comment? Yes, sir. You please state your name for the record.
David Olrey. Resident of St. Marie, the county of Chippewa, kind of revisiting the topic of our county records. In particular, as a follow-up to Resolution 2301, and Kelly was kind of thanking him for providing me the background to that, which is actually the county surveyors. Law. And I wholeheartedly, I mean, thank you again for bringing our county records home to the county seat. Access to the county records are a bit of an issue with me, and I think the general public, anybody that, I'm a licensed practicing surveyor federally certified. I'm also the chapter representative for the Society of Michigan Society of Professional Surveyors here, so I'm going to try to work this out with my fellow professionals, but I guess the underlying concern I have is the access to the records during business hours. I know Patty, the resolution involves Wednesdays by appointment. Now, again, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to pretend to, you know, presume to interpret a lot, but we can all read it, and I think access to the records are paramount to, you know, facilitation of property sales to that point. You know, and I support your, you know, working with our registered deeds. I would triple that if you could. I mean, if we could digitize these records, it won't make, it won't make, you know, any of us have to come in and get them. It's also whatever you're going to charge for those records. If you're familiar with the remonetization program, we call it in our profession, our retirement fund is to take fund, public funding for remonetization program, which is sorely lacking here in Chippewa County, and we need to to address that because when people want to sell and buy property and ergo pay taxes for all of your wages, you know, that comes from knowing where the boundaries are in particular, and some of the, some of the deeds we got to work with up here are challenging, to say the least. We need some good legal counsel. We need, we need cooperation with the county and the, and the local professionals trying to operate here, and that goes to title as well. Um, I don't know if you've ever been over there and listened to Gigi trying to answer all the legal questions that the public throws at her, and I think she's overwhelmed. If you could, you know, give her some, you know, some legal backing and guidance on that. I've offered my, my, my support to her and, and due to, you know, and as well pro bono to the county. I'm also an active member with the Society of American Engineering Engineers, and I told the district commander that I intend to do an abstract of the city property or, you know, our title goes back considerable way past the original government land office surveys and the patents, and I'm going to provide all the federal holdings for this area pro bono. So I'd like to, to know that I have the support of our political leaders here in Chippewa County to make that happen and access to the county records as they currently exist, and we'll assume that they meet the criteria of the statute. So thank you.
During our comments at the end, do address.
Very good. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. And your service. Any other comments? Or anything?
Uh, no one on Zoom making a motion.
No, there's none. Okay. Going once, going twice. Minister for report, Minister of Church.
Your normal reports from the Health Department, Veterans Affairs, Sheriff's Department, Animal Control, and the recycling one is the quarterly report. Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Next is new business. Your packet 27 resolutions on National Forest Service Chippewa County Campgrounds. This will have to be. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I requested this resolution about a month ago. The people, I heard that all these people were getting their reservations canceled at campgrounds this summer in our area. And after looking into it, it was a widespread issue at the National Forest Campgrounds involving a total of 233 campsites and in between Mackinac and Chippewa County. So it's every single night you could have 233 families, visitors, couples, individuals that could be camping in our area who can't because the campgrounds are closed. The issue is something to do with hazardous trees, which I don't need to know all the detail, but I can tell you that I at least walked into the Monaco Lake campground, and it looks the same as it has to me since I've been going there 45 years ago. And I don't know what the heck is going on, but someone's got to get their act together here and get these campgrounds reopened. These campgrounds bring a lot of tourism to Northern Michigan, which is our number one industry. With the locks project, we're already losing a lot of hotel rooms that the locks contractor has booked in some cases half the rooms long-term at a hotel. In other cases, they've even booked the entire hotel. So we have fewer rooms available. We have these campgrounds all closed, and it just, it needs to be fixed. And these are National Forest Campgrounds, and this resolution is addressing it, telling the, our federal officials that at the end of the day, the buck stops with them because it's their campgrounds. They need to get real. So I would move that we approve this.
I support it. She can support discussion.
I too had some people calling me on this and this to do with tree trimming or lack of tree trim. They, they, like they revamp what they do and how they do it to determine what's hazardous and what isn't, but it is costing financial burden to the people that contract with the federal government to take care of these campgrounds and their irate people getting turned away that had reservations.
And you can't, this isn't Sherman Park also? Isn't that all contractors Sherman Park?
Sure. No, they're real, they reopen Sherman Park. Of course, that's a city campground, but they, that, that's something new. They just reopened Sherman Park.
230.
It's all, it's Soldier Lake, it's Monaco Lake, it's, it's all these campgrounds. And, and, you know, and again, they, they talk about trees, and they're on a campground in the forest. What, what, when's the last time you ever heard of anybody getting hurt in a campground by a tree falling on them or, or a branch falling on them randomly out of a tree? I mean, it's not an imminent, imminent danger. If they need to get in there and do maintenance, do it. But my goodness, closing the campgrounds, it seems maybe quite an overreaction.
We actually were Brimley State Park last year, our cross-country game, a tree went down, not where we were, but the people weren't there, but it's, it's a risk you take. I mean, if you're in a forest walking around or snow being on your ATD, a tree could come down. I mean, it was a big thunderstorm came in and, and, you know, that's not the first time that's happened. It's, you know, a tree could fall in front of you going down on 28. I mean, you can't run scared.
Fall across the driveway.
Yeah. Yeah.
You go down the Forest Service Office, you can get a backcountry camping permit. You can pitch your tent in the middle of the woods without anybody checking the trees before you do. I don't understand why you can't use the same common sense in a.
Well, you should have snagged J. H. The leadership.
Yes.
Because that's Stavonos. Yeah, because I'd be interested. I just, this, this is just acid.
There's a story behind that somewhere.
Somewhere.
Well, and again, I don't even care. I don't want to know. All I want is get them open because they need to be.
Our livelihood with, that's what we're here for.
It's very important. We do. And think about, I hate to prattle on about this, but think about all the small businesses out there in, in Brimley and Trout Lake and, you know, all these small businesses that rely on the tourism and the campers that come in and buy groceries and whatever, and they're padlocked. It's just, it's just crazy.
Maybe you need some traction on.
Well, I, yeah, I think we ought to share this immediately with the other counties, and we immediately need to get it in front of our federal legislative legislators.
Is it, I wonder if this is statewide or just?
Uh, it's, no, I think it's just here.
Remember reading the notice. It was just these in particular.
I, I had read that it was instigated by, somebody had decided that since they shut down the reservation systems and cancel all the reservations rather than wait, and then that triggered, for whatever reason, closing the campgrounds. But even if there are some hazardous trees, you know, certainly not, but they're, they're not hanging over the whole campground. You know, rope off that end if that's what you need to do. But I, I just, it seems to me it must, it's almost like a personnel issue, and we're paying for it.
Might be right. They're short. Who seems to always get the short end of the stick? The UP. Okay, so we're ready for both things. Everybody all set? Go call it, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Approved.
Mr. Savoy.
Yes.
Mr. Shackleton.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next resolution, 23 dash oh nine, opposition, let's say, those on establishing statewide septic code.
Yeah, I like to ask that you consider voting for this. This is a statewide septic code. This is going to require several things, including, as he mentioned, an inspection every five years. It's also triggers an inspection if you pull a permit to improve your property. And, and the inspection includes pumping out the entire system and hauling away. We don't have enough area to take care of all of the extra waste for the project in the first place. We don't have enough people to haul it. We don't have enough people to inspect it. It's a, it is, it is ill conceived. It is, I mean, perhaps it'll work down in the big city where they're thinking about it at. We already have an excellent inspection regime that we follow that's approved by, you know, UP-wide health organization. I think we can stick with that. We haven't experienced any negative outcome from it. And again, this is one of those places where it's a, it's a big city, you know, it's a big city solution foisted on us. We have, you know, over 10,000 septic systems in this, in this county. And this is, this isn't just commercial operations. These are, you know, mom and pop, their family cabin that they're, they only use seasonally anyway. This could really put a burden on our, on our folks to keep using their property. So it's clear to me, we need to, we need to oppose this. We will be the first county in the state to offer this resolution, and I will encourage your support.
Yeah, I thank you for bringing this forward. The last thing we need is the government and our septic tanks.
Could, could we modify this? Because I really like your idea of here's an alternate, you know, because everybody likes to complain. But Commissioner Shackleton has a very good solution to, hey, we already have something that works here in the UP. Leave us be.
Yeah, it, it does mention that in the second whereas.
Okay, is it?
Um, that we follow the Upper Peninsula Environmental Health Code. But it does not say, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily ask for a wave report, but it does point out that we do have our own area-wide code.
But we, or do you think that's maybe asking a little too much? That's be a MAC issue.
That's, that's kind of a strategy for MAC to pursue as far as, you know, trying, trying to offer it as a legislative cure to give people the option to, or counties the option to opt out.
I tried to make it relatively generic so that other counties could, knowing we were the first, so the other counties could quickly cut and paste and run this through. I've already talked to one of the commissioners in Mackinac County. She wants a copy as soon as we pass whatever we pass, and so that they can look at it. Actually, she's, that's on a Wednesday, so.
Let's get it done. Anybody else?
Do we actually need a motion to pass it, or we just vote on it?
I think you need a motion since it's a resolution to support.
Like, yeah, I'd like to move that we accept the resolution.
Support.
Support. Any further discussion?
I, it might, I just also like to compliment Commissioner Lawrence on, on this. It's, I'm glad you put it together and brought it forward. It's a, it would be tremendously onerous on our Health Department and on the individuals in the county. Can you imagine if we have 10,000 in this area? That means on average, an additional 2,000 inspections a year. You know, if it's every five years, that's 2,000 a year on, on average. Wait, and they can't do, they can't keep up now. So we would have to hire more help, and I'm willing to bet they're not going to give us money to do that. And, and again, you're going to have to charge the homeowner quite a bit to do these inspections.
And we'll have to pack them in half a year. You can't do them here.
Oh, yeah, because you can only do them during, during, uh, really kind of the no frost time.
We're fortunate. We have few areas where they can broadcast the, the sewage and fields. They don't have anywhere in Mackinac County that they can do that right now. And for them to try to handle all that extra.
In the city, from my understanding, the city won't accept it from, from sewage haulers.
No, they, they won't. Newbury does. The local haulers haul up to Newbury.
Yeah, so.
That's not cheap.
It's, it's a, it's a bad deal. It's a really bad deal.
I do want to point out, I did, I got to go to the, the conference over there in Escanaba, and this is actually where I learned about this at, is that the UCF cap, and it was, it was, it was money well spent. It was time well invested. I wouldn't really have known about this. I got to speak with Senator McBroom there. He's, he's working on it. I've spoken with most of his people. They're, they're aware of it. They're, they're looking at it too. So we are getting a little attention.
Do you want to discuss? We'll go, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have resolution 2023-10 imposing 2023 proper tax, send it to MCL to 11.248. And I'll just say it all because I'm, I don't see all of those.
So move support.
Motion support for the proper tax. Special. Go call it, please.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Savoy.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Sherman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have resolution 2023-11 tentatively approving conceptual understanding for the transfer of hospital facilities and providing the opportunity for public input prior to consideration of final approval. I will make that motion. Support. Yes, support. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, there is a new copy that is not in, it would have been handed out separately because there were some changes based on last night's questions during finance regarding the transfer of the land and the buildings and what entity they would go to. So there is an updated resolution in there.
In the new packet you gave us today.
The one that was attached to the finance minute.
Okay. Or is it? Yeah.
It's just a few minor wording changes.
Yes.
Doesn't change the concept.
Not at all. It just lists out the seven different centers that my Michigan help has in the reason why the property building needs to be transferred to the local entity, although the, the whole project is guaranteed by corporate entity.
Any discussion?
I think we discussed it indeed.
We certainly did. I'm still very uncomfortable. It, it came in, we were going to have 60-year, three-generation of, of a much better product than what we had. But suddenly it's turned into 10 years. And that's, I, I just, I don't understand why the 60-year lease was fine. And then it wasn't. It just, well, a lot can change. Well, then why did we do this 60? The $2 million would be nice. The boundary, so to speak, in city good, $70 million to be invested by, by January 1st. And not to buy anything over $5 million outside, $70 million into escrow. I don't understand how that's going to work. Basically, though, even before the 10 years, the way I read it, they can opt out if they pay us 2.5 million in liquidated damages. And I've got five more questions that I really would like answers to, and, and I think it was a good idea to give us a month to chew on this, to give the public a chance to chew on this. I, like I said, I just, I, I don't understand why 60 years is good, and then it's not. As far as two and a half million dollars in damages, they just, and thankfully so, spent 20 million on our debt. And for that, we certainly have to say thank you. But I just, I have an uneasy feeling here. I want my children, if my daughter ever does come back here, to have a great product. As I get older, as we all get older, that we have a great product when it comes to healthcare. And, and I, I think we have that at this point, but if my Michigan were to divest itself of War Memorial, that would be, could be troublesome. I, you know, when, when Sheboygan lost their OBGYN, suddenly now they have to drive 30, 40 miles to have a baby. Here, should something like that happen, and it's in this that, well, if we don't find right people or good people or whatever, then we're, we're just not going to do that. But imagine in the winter, having your, your wife goes into labor or your daughter, granddaughter goes into labor, and the choice is to drive to Marquette or drive to Tuskegee. Because OB-GYN is no longer offered here. Or dialysis or patient behavioral health, indignant care, all can disappear after 10 years. And I just cannot in good conscience. You know, it says their desires to keep these things, and I think everybody's desire to keep these things, but the fiscal reality may not work at all. So that's my two cents. Mr. Carcheck or Mr. Calcheck and I, I'm sure will talk when I get back from New England. And I think he can probably answer these questions.
Yes, sir. I'd like to say there's a misconception out there that we own a hospital. We do not own a hospital. We have some brick and mortar and some land, so we own that part. But far as operation of a hospital or manage a hospital or what services they are going to provide, we have zero to do with it. If they want to cancel surgeries, there's nothing we can do right now. If they want not deliver babies or dialysis, whatever they want to provide, we have zero say. We have no oversight, nothing. We own brick and mortar and some land. So, so it's not our hospital, and it hasn't been our hospital for years. So if we want to improve health services, I mean, even if you say it's 10 years, it's better than what we have right now because tomorrow they can eliminate half the services over there. There's nothing anyone on this board could do. Pass a resolution, maybe. What's that going to do? So if we're going to move forward and progress and hopefully have better healthcare, and they're willing to invest the money, I think it's a common sense to do, thing to do. We just don't have any other, any other decisions we could make. We put a lot of work. Everyone could have participated, or not everyone, but. Everyone could have participated, or not everyone, but you could have participated in negotiation and trying to resolve these issues. I did, or Lawrence did. And we couldn't have more than two commissioners. They're out of dime, but we could have rotated. So you know, they, if if they're gonna lease a building from me, and they want to put seventy million dollars into it, and they came to me, said, we feel a lot better if we own that building. I think that's just common sense. So I I mean, I just don't know what Plan B would be if if we don't do this. Tell me what Plan B is. If you'd like it to go on for next sixty years, what control do we have? What oversight? What authority? Nothing. So so at least here, we have ten years guaranteed nonprofit, and there's strict guidelines if they don't do what they say they're going to do. We worked all that out. We hired one of the best attorneys, municipal attorneys, probably the best in the state of Michigan, Mister Fisher. And and my Michigan, they bargained in good faith there. They gave up things. I don't think we gave up anything. Look at, look at what the proposal claim and we're gonna get two million. That's way over what this value. So and and then if you take the lease, if we don't put in, we don't build on and we don't make improvements, when the lease runs out, the buildings aren't worth anything unless you keep them, and we can't make them do that now. So at least we have a guarantee that they're going to invest this money and make improvements, and we got at least a ten-year. And I know if they want to pull out in ten years, I think there's other hospitals, especially Toscana, that would want to move in here. I don't know what else we can do, so I have to support.
But I guess my Plan B would simply be make the penalty higher if they go out, or if they do stay for sixty years, give it to them. If if they are that dedicated, they stay with us for sixty years. Give it to them.
That goes back to what this whole thing started. They're giving away our hospital. We're not giving it away now. So sixty years, we're gonna give it away? That's that's the biggest thing I heard from the community when this first started years ago. They're gonna give away our hospital.
And those are the phone calls I got.
Yeah, but we're not giving it away. We negotiated in good faith. It's to the public's best interest. I'm the one who asked for a thirty-day delay on the vote, because that takes sort of the effect of a public hearing. So if we got five commissioners here, all your constituents can contact each one of us or all of us. And in thirty days, we can, do we need to tweak it some more? Do we, are we comfortable where we're at? That delay, I thought was important. So I guess I said enough on it.
Oh, that's fine. Absolutely. That's why we're here. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting that you brought up that the clothes will be and people would have to drive to have a deliver babies. That's actually what happened in West Branch Hospital. They closed the OB, not my Michigan. The OB had been closed, and people did have to drive to deliver babies. When my Michigan went in there and affiliated in West Branch, they heard from the community that they wanted it back, so they invested millions of dollars and reopened obstetrics and re-opened the birthing center, and they can, they're having, uh, they they have the ability to have babies there now. So so that, you know, so that, so I just want to point that out. When you when you're worried about those sorts of things, those are good things to be worried about, because those are services we're worried about. But um, I wanted you to be aware that, coincidentally, the very thing that you mentioned happened in West Branch, and my Michigan was the solution. They went in and reopened it.
And we're gonna can we send an e-copy of this to TV, radio, newspaper, whatever? So.
There's some.
Everything, I mean, that's why I put everything in the finance packet. I put the appraisal, I put the opinions, I put the leases, I put the drawings, I put the conceptual agreement, I put the resolution, all the all the resolution has been updated today. It's all in there.
Not just people like e-copies of stuff. They like it electronically, I suppose. They're not gonna drive down here and grab a packet is all all I'm saying.
It goes out to you guys, and then it also goes out to, I have a large group on email already that get each packet that we send out. If anybody wants to be added to that, they just need to contact me.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, we are, any more discussion?
I got a couple.
Sir.
It looks like we've worked out, one of my concern was yesterday. In every meeting that I've attended in the last month and a half, that's what I've talked about, was the sale of the hospital. And if anybody had any questions, get them to the board or get them to someone, pass it on. And so far, unlike anybody's heard anything on it. I've been to Drummond, Ken Ross, Pickford, Road Commission, and I've passed it on to everyone that I go to. Today was the presence. Talked to the wardens there, passed it all on there. So there should be something stirring somewhere. There's a problem.
And if there isn't, then we know that this was the right solution.
I just want to compliment Christian Trainer. He's out there all the time at all the meetings, really out there. I just, that's that's amazing. I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're so dedicated to do all this.
Thank you. I don't plan on missing any, but once, I had two meetings at the same time, so I had to decide which way did I go. But usually when I do the meetings here, on the way home, I hit one of the township meetings.
Jeez.
Usually on the same days.
Great job.
Quite. One thing I'd like to add, I mean, philosophically, I think government should own as little property as possible. And anything we're not directly using is in essence a liability. Um, and and that's kind of how I see our situation here is, is, you know, as long as we're have our fingers in it, it's it's more of a liability than it is a a benefit. And um, I'm coming at it, you know, I'm I'm getting to learn about this here, kind of at the tail end of it. And I do want to say I've I've been impressed at how much everybody's had some input, how everything, you know, everybody's tried to um, put their print on this and and make it something that we're all comfortable with. And I'm just very impressed with the with the negotiations and the and the civility of it all, putting it all together. So as a newcomer, I want to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we'll have a little call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Hi.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
No. All right, next we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, investment policy, by name, page twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Uh, standing committee reports personnel equalization and postment, transportation, health, and social services, forty-five minute.
Okay, regular meeting of the Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, Personnel Equalization and Aportion Aportionate Transportation Health and Social Services Committee was held on Tuesday, June sixth, twenty twenty-three, at Chippewa County Courthouse, St. Mary's. Uh, Chairman Lawrence called the meeting to order ten a.m., on present. Members present, Damon Lawrence, Bob Savoy, members absent, Scott Shackleton, and Kelly Trick is also present. Uh, moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Lawrence to approve the agenda. No public comment was offered. Personnel items, uh, the committee reviewed the increased approximate expenses of twenty thousand, three hundred and three dollars and forty, approximate expenses of twenty thousand, three hundred and three dollars and forty-six cents associated with the changing seventy-nine-hour position to full-time for central dispatch. Director Postma believes this will help fill shifts better for the operations of the center. This move will leave dispatch with two seventy-nine-hour positions and twelve full-time dispatchers covering Chippewa, Mackinac, and Luce Counties. Dispatchers are still needed. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Lawrence to approve the request to move one seventy-nine-hour position to full-time, start of the next pay period. A voice vote motion carried. Medical examiner contract renewal and amendment.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's okay.
So you want to uh make that motion?
You said, I would so move, and then he.
You say I'm a voice vote motion carry, they just say I make that motion.
Can I make that motion?
Support.
And support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Committee reviewed an agreement between Chippewa County and Dr. Paula Rechner for medical examining services, which needs to be renewed and effective from January one, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, as presented. Committee also reviewed an amendment increasing the monthly compensation by five hundred dollars, effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This compensation increase will put Chippewa County Medical Examiner annual payment for services at thirty-nine thousand dollars in comparison with Hilton um, at thirty-six thousand and Delta at forty-two thousand. Um, the increase also reflects on on the increased number of cases handled annually. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Lawrence to approve the renewal agreement with Dr. Paula Rechner for medical examiner services, two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars monthly, effective from January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And authorize and approve a first amendment to the medical examiner agreement, increasing compensation by five hundred dollars per month, effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, on a voice vote, and a voice vote, the motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
The committee reviewed an employment contract to help cover temporary absences by means of a supplemental veteran service officer following policy two fifteen reimbursement, which would be eighty percent of the starting salary of the position, sixteen sixty-seven per hour. The position will need to have the appropriate and current credentialing to offer VSO services. These supplemental services will be written into the future grant requests as well, asking for a change in the current uh grant to authorize these expenditures. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Lawrence to approve the and authorize the employment contract as presented for VSO supplemental service on a voice vote, the motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I oppose. Motion passes.
Building Department Part-Time Official. Committee was given an overview of the Building Department Part-Time Official Position, which essentially has the same responsibilities and is required to have the same licensure as a full-time position, including doing residential plan reviews. Discussion followed regarding different options to supplement the pay for these services. As a starting pay for the full-time position is twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, and we are currently paying sixteen dollars and twenty cents per hour. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Lawrence to authorize a pay increase for the part-time building inspector to an hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour, effective at the beginning of the next pay period. Uh, voice vote, the motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
Are are we okay then on staffing in that area?
Yes, we have the one full-time and one twenty-nine-hour position.
Okay, and this, all right, sounds good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Medical Director Contract Renewal and Amendment. The committee reviewed an agreement between Chippewa County and Dr. Patricia Newhouse for the Home Health and Hospice Medical Director Services, which needs to be renewed and effective from January first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as presented. The committee also reviewed an amendment increasing the monthly comments compensation by five hundred dollars uh effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. This amendment adds a responsibility to serve as physician of choice for hospice patients, including writing orders, prescribing medications, consultation, and attendance and interdisciplinary team meetings. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve the renewal agreement with Patricia Newhouse for Home Health and Hospice Medical Director Services, one thousand dollar monthly effective from January first, twenty twenty-three through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and authorize and approve a first amendment to the medical director agreement, increasing compensation by five hundred dollars per month, effective June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the added responsibilities as as the physician of choice for hospice patients. On a voice vote, the motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
That physician of choice, the, does that happen, does that mean if they don't have their own uh primary care doc that she will be their primary care?
A lot of the primary doctors shy away from hospice a little bit, and we feel that if we Karen and administration feel that if they could add this, that people might be getting the hospice services earlier. As we all know from learning from the health department, they can be on hospice for a couple of years, and they just feel if they have this in there, we might be able to get people more set up for what they're going through at the time.
I got. Sounds like a like a good move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes.
The committee reviewed policies five zero two, five zero five, and five zero six. Policy five oh two only had a slight change in the general guidelines, adding, quote, while maintain optimal network performance, uh, end quote, and two new policies, five zero five regarding county provided telephone laptops and tablets use, and five zero six regarding the security camera policy for both courthouse and the county building. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Lawrence to approve policies number five zero two, internet and online usage. Number five zero five, agency provided telephone, laptop, and tablets, and number five zero six, county building and courthouse security camera policies as presented on a voice vote, the motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion and support. Any more discussion on the county policy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes.
And the meeting was adjourned. At ten fifteen.
To accept.
And I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Support.
Motion and support to accept the minutes of the committee as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Next, Mr. Savoy, Sir, Finance, Claims and Accounts.
The regular meeting of Finance, Claims and Accounts Committee meeting was held on June twelfth, four forty-eight P.M. All members were present. There were other people in attendance. It was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve the agenda as presented on voice vote, motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion support to accept minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
There were no public comments. We review correspondence, information items, uh, investment report, visa billing, travel request, no action required. We then moved into agenda items. First was county audit presentation, moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the Chippewa County draft audit and not to and not release until final approval of administration to publish the release where necessary at the time on voice vote, motion carried and ISO.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes.
Next was Health Department Deferred Comp, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize the Chippewa County Health Department terminating the empowered deferred comp plan, three four zero one two zero dash four one, as presented on voice vote, motion carried and ISO move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes.
Uh, Treacher's Office Investment Policy by Annual Review. What action on that?
You just did that during the break of the meeting.
Yeah. Okay, register a D's, MOU's, electronic recording payment, the move by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin to prove. The move by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Martin, to prove and authorize the MOUs for corporate corporation service company and simple file to provide electronic recordings and payments to Chippewa County Register of Deeds Office on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor? Both, motion passes.
Sheriff's Department Storage Building. Motion by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Lawrence, to authorize a hundred fifty-nine thousand dollar agreement presented by U P engineers and architects, provide design bidding and construction administration as directed by the committee with a breakdown in cost for each item, so that the board of commissioners can build the project based on pricing of each hall. Ultimate for deference aspects of the building payment to be from the county fund balance on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support on the storage building. Any discussion? All those in favor? Both, motion passes.
Sheriff's Department Stone Garden Purchase Service, moved by Commissioner Lawrence, ordered by Commissioner Trainer to authorize additional, additional eleven dollars.
That's correct.
And two thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for can and four wheeler and a Ranger S X S A T V to be paid from the ORV grant to make a budget amendment and to authorize the purchase of a marine electronic equipment and lights for the purchase of the boat on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support. Commissioner Savoy, I thought it was misprint too, so I asked the under. If you say so, because I'm sure every penny has to be accounted for. So that's why, sir. Thank you.
I think they'll just for a piece of trim.
Well, wouldn't buy a tank of gas, would it?
Oh. Any, yes, any discussion? All those in favor? Both, motion passes.
Sheriff's Department Equipment, approval release to auction. There was a move by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Shackleton to authorize your request of Sheriff's Department to offer to public sale excess equipment, each item listed with a minimum debt and will be awarded to highest bidder via sealed bids and to utilize some of the proceeds to purchase lights and electronics as referred above on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for the auction, and that will be publicized, correct? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Both, motion passes.
Next was Chippewa County Animal Control, Finish Design and Building Services, moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize Arby Construction Corporation to complete the Chippewa County Animal Control Shovel to Expansion and Renovation. On a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
Like to say that the majority of these funds were donated. I mean, a lot of money, and they anticipate other, other funds to come in as donations. This will be a great improvement for our animal control services.
There's no plans to use general fund money unless it is to borrow it until they get it.
Yes. Why I said other donations, so we're very fortunate to have this unnamed gentleman to to find this funding.
Just wish we could find an unnamed person to wanna build a storage facility for the sheriff's.
They could be right next to each other.
Dude, that's great though, the people do that and don't want any sheriff's fanfare at all. That's awesome. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Both, motion passes.
Uh, Office of Emergency Services, Sioux High Tower Antenna Replacement, moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve the quote from Elcon to replace Sioux High Tower. Paid for by Fund Two Twelve and Wade County Purchasing Policy on a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support for the new antenna. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Uh, next was Administration, my Michigan Property Transfer. Kelly, do we have to vote on this? We already passed the resolution.
You passed the resolution, but this is the concept, so I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I was distracted here for a second. What was the question?
It's two separate things. I mean, this, you were voting for the concept and then the resolution.
Be safe.
We already passed the resolution. Yeah, no, you wouldn't, I'm sorry, you wouldn't have to, uh, vote on this at all, because we, we, it's just like, like any time we vote on a resolution and finance, um, it's recorded here because it's part of the minutes, but we vote on it separately.
So final would be a Finance Claims and Accounts for May for the county and health department. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Lawrence, to recommend the approval of the May County Bills and Payroll, General Claims, Other Fund Claims, Payroll and Health Department Claims and Payroll. On a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support to pay the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, I.
Motion passes.
Committee Comments, there were none under Chairman Comments. Uh, I asked for a moment of silence for, uh, Lieutenant Jack Horka, who just recently passed away. His services is on Thursday. He has, I think just under forty years, and very dedicated service to the citizens of this county. We appreciate everything he's done for us. Uh, it was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence, to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at five thirty-three PM, and I would so move for the acceptance and distribution of this report as presented.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor? Both, motion passes. Uh, any comments? Commissioner comments?
Oh, absolutely. I got a whole Jeremy Gangnam from U P Engineers and Architects, and I would explain to him what happened with the that what he did. Yeah, no problem. And I did join another meeting this month, Saint Mary River Skeeters. Keep going, that one too. That's only once every three months.
He's gonna make, he's gonna make Don McLean look like he's.
Ball of fire.
That's awesome.
Oh, I have one comment. While we're being magnanimous, just wanna thank Brian for always taking care of these Zoom meetings so well for us and everything. Uh, that we're able to, uh, include the public and that. Every meeting, Brian's here taking care of it, so thank you, Brian.
You're welcome. Don't forget Mike.
And Mike too.
I would just like to close. Thank you for listening to professionalism and your insight. Uh, because we all come at this from a different angle, so, thank you, as usual. Wonderful group to work with, even when we agree to disagree. It's all good. I would entertain a motion, so move, adjournment, motion and support. All those in favor?